We do have a quorum. So I would ask all town meeting members, please, to be in the front of the auditorium, in other words, in front of the divider up there. No, you're fine. One hard-bleating, one or two coming in. So maybe this is the time to say that we are fortunate enough tonight. Senator Moore is here to observe our proceedings, standing there on the doorway. Now, since this is the first meeting since the last election, there are two or three things that I just want to, we'll have new people here, that I want to make clear. There was a handbook for town meeting members, and it's online. And three rules that help to make town meeting flourish. Number one, the hallmark of town meeting is civility. We address articles, proposals, and principles. We don't address one another. We do not shout out. We do not line up at the microphone. Stay in your seat, raise your hand, and I will recognize you. If you don't, hell will freeze before I recognize you. On any given article, you may speak only twice, and the second time is after other members have spoken once. I would ask everyone, please, to immediately shut off their phones and any other electrical device that can disturb this meeting. Since there will be a couple of two-thirds votes tonight, we need counters. On the left side, Ellen Ethea and Beth Johnson. In the middle, Ellen Ganley and, I'm sorry, Ellen, can't read my own writing. Deb Valentine? Ellen Gabyry, what's my problem? Ellen Gabyry and Deb Valentine. And in the middle, Ellen Ganley and Barbara Granger. Will you please come forward to be sworn? As you can see, we're doing something slightly different tonight, trying to get you through a female president, perhaps. The only other thing, could I ask people, since we have somebody new up here in front, when you second a motion, would you please keep your hand and your card up high so you can be recognized, they can get your name down, okay? Thank you. Article one, did you hear the report of the Finance Committee of the Town Offices and Committees, or act on anything relative thereto?
Good evening. This is the Finance Committee reporting on your town meeting, October 27, 2015. When we last met in May, 2015, Town Meeting approved a $58.3 million budget for fiscal 2016. In the five months since that annual town meeting, funding for the 2016 budget for Beacon Hill and several other sources have been finalized with a proposed increase of $226,000 in the operating budget from the annual town meeting estimates from last May. Our town CFO will have a presentation with highlights and modifications to the original 2016 approved budget. Two significant financial additions to the budget before you tonight include the addition of one full-time DPW worker and increased seasonal help funding, and initial capital spending and operating expense requests for a Pachachaw golf course, which the town will be self-managing, starting with just over two months from tonight. Finance Committee supports both additions to the budget, although we do regret that a second full-time DPW worker should not be added at this time due to financial constraints. Regarding warrant articles, Finance Committee takes the following positions. Articles two through 12, we recommend approval, with some comments, not on all articles. Article two establishes an enterprise fund for the operation of Pachachaw Golf Course. Once again, we're in favor of this. Article three makes modest additions and adjustments to the operating budget, a total of $226,000 increase. Of that, $121,000 to the DPW is specifically to initiate operations for the golf course, and an additional approximately $26,000 will be added to the DPW to fund a new position for seasonal labor hours. Those positions starting in January 2016. Finally, there is $82,000 in additional bond financing costs that were not anticipated at the main annual town meeting. Article four requests $118,000 from the General Fund for initial capital equipment purchases for the golf course. Article five and six are sponsored by the School Department regarding incremental transportation costs for homeless students, and an adjustment to the previously approved annual Medicaid reimbursement. Once again, we are in favor of these articles. Article seven seeks funding for cyclical property revaluation expenses. Articles eight and nine seek funding for municipal building needs, including the upkeep of the two elementary schools recently taken off. Article 10 adds $130,000 to the stabilization fund. Articles 11 and 12 are self-funded requests for equipment from the Cemetery Trust at home. Articles 13 through 15, we defer to the petitioner, which includes two non-financial bylaw changes and one creative assets. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Osso, Chairman Finance Committee, and Kavanaugh Vice Chair, Edmond Coleman, Kimberly Holstrom, and Mallory O'Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi.
Yes, please. Jacobson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be very brief. I'm not going to, this evening, we're not going to be giving a presentation, just overall, we were doing that at the annual town meeting. So we're just going to focus on the articles this evening. So Bill Foyle will be giving a presentation, our DPW Director, as well as Ed Kadenowitz, our Assistant Town Manager and CFO. But what I did want to say to you tonight, it's a good opportunity for this, to be aware, the town of Auburn, we did receive all of our approvals from the state to enter into a municipal aggregation contract, and this will affect every one of the residents in the town. We were able to work through our municipal aggregation consultant, Colonial Power, and we went out to bid in early October, and we secured a rate of .09522, so 9.5 cents. This is about 30% less than the National Grid rate that goes into best on, in November 1st, of 13.12 cents, probably around that. The rate that we got of 9.5 cents is 100% removal, which is just incredible. To get that rate as a National Grid customer, you pay another $2 cents per call. So just wanted to give everyone the opportunity to understand how this will work. You'll be receiving letters, every customer of NatCos, customer of National Grid, will receive a letter from Colonial and the town, Colonial being our accountant, and the town, in early November, so probably about a week or so from now. In that letter, we'll explain to you how to opt out. This is an opt-in program, so you are automatically in, you don't have to do anything. If you have a contract with another service provider, you will not get the letter, because you don't want to violate those contracts. If you're in a contract, National Grid wouldn't even have your information. You get our information from current National Grid customers. So if you are a current National Grid customer, you will get this letter in about a week, maybe two weeks, explaining how to opt out, how the program works. The rate becomes effective December 1, you'll see it in your bills and your email. We're happy to answer any questions. There's information on our website, there's phone numbers that you can call for information. We just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to let all of you know, because it's a good, we're trying to do as much outreach as we can to let you know about this program. So we want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all of their support, and everyone who worked with us to get this thing done. It's taken about a year and a half. Want to thank, as we've all been super here, the former Chair of the Windcharby and Alternate Energy Committee, and all the members of that committee for vetting this process, going through it very, very carefully, making sure we got a really good municipal aggregation consultant, Colonial, which we do. And it's moving along. We had several conversations today with Colonial, our attorney, Bob Henigan, going over the contract, just to make sure it's exactly as we want it. So to make sure we have not signed it, until the contract is exactly the way we want it, we won't be signing it. We hope that that will be tomorrow. So as soon as that contract is signed, you'll be, that will start the process for getting these letters. So right now, the rate is secured, and just now, we're making sure all the, everything's dotted across on the contract. So that's all I wanted to add tonight. Again, if you have any questions on anything else that comes up over the evening, we're obviously here, but just wanted to make sure that you knew about municipal aggregation, because we estimate, our consultants estimate, it will save the average homeowner $30 to $40 a month in a lesson. It's a one-year contract, and it will expire a year from now, at which point we will go back out to bid again. We didn't want to go beyond the one year, because we weren't sure of the stability of the market, what was going to happen. We recommended that we go with the one year, we felt that was a good way to start.
Okay, I'll throw the question.
Thank you. Have you got a question?
So, I'm sorry, I can scarcely see.
Up at Tickers 231, Nobry Street. I wanted to say that this is a good price. Many of you, as I recently, have received a letter from Constellation, which I believe is the same company that you have at a 9.5 cents, and they're offering it to me as an individual at 10.5 cents. So this buying in bulk has paid off for everyone. You see, right there, you're saving a penny over buying it as an individual instead of as a group at the town of Auburn. And I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Hossi, please.
While I'm here, I also want to take the opportunity just to thank our legislative delegation, Representative Brock, who I see as open the act, for Senator Moore. I have to tell you, when we entered into this process, probably a year ago, starting to look at it, we were told by other communities, as well as the people of the state that we needed to work with, we needed to get approval from the Department of Environmental Resources, we also needed approval from the Department of Public Utilities, and we were told to expect that it would be a 12-month process. And thanks to the advocacy of our legislative delegation and people in the town, we were able to get all of our state approvals in a little bit over three months. So we were rushing, because we wanted to get this rate locked in, secured before this winter hit, and those rates weren't. So just wanted to make sure we thank everyone, because a lot of people pulled together to get this thing done quickly, and we're grateful that it happened. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Kowski.
You've done an excellent job, Mr. Jacobson. Is there a procedure for opting in for those of us that are not in the municipal group?
Yes. The procedure, the question is, is there a procedure for opting in? If you're currently a customer under another contract, watch the language in your contract. There may be penalties for getting out early, but if you want to assume those penalties, you could, you can opt into this program at any time, at no cost. You can wait until your contract with a current provider expires and opt into this program. You can also opt out at any time. There are no penalties associated with opting in or out.
Thank you very much.
Tom Dufour, please, and five, just a quick question. That rate, is that just for residential, or is that also for commercial customers?
That rate is for the commercial customers as well. We've been reaching out to the business community. Many of the larger businesses in town have already gone through and signed a contract. A couple of the businesses shared with me their contracts, and the rate that we got was actually lower than a couple of them, and it was probably one penny higher than some of them, because they buy, you know, this is an aggregate program, so if you have a very large company, they can get a lower rate, as Mr. Kowski was saying, buying in bulk. So it is open to the business community, we're trying to get the word out there that they might want to look at this. It actually will benefit the residents if we get more businesses, because more businesses will sign up, more customers in the aggregation, and when we go back out again, lower rates. Thank you.
Good evening, town meeting. It's been a very busy and successful year for the town and the residents. Few of the many highlights include the opening of a brand-new, state-of-the-art middle school on West Street, the repurposing of the old middle school to a new intermediate school, grades two through five, and the decommissioning Mary D. Stone and the Julia Bancroft schools, which we'll discuss tonight under topic Lee. The town administration successfully met with the bond rating agencies and received an upgrade to the town's bond rating from Moody's to a AA2, and retained its very, its very rating, a good rating, of AA+ from the standard in fours. These very strong ratings will allow the town to realize hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest savings over the term of the bond. As Ms. Jacobson noted tonight about the municipal aggregation contract, it's a win-win for all of us. The town continues with our multimillion-dollar roadway improvement program, where we have completed the reconstruction of almost 30 miles of roads since 2011. The town continues to provide a wide range of community events for residents of all ages, as well as continued cost-saving measures and programs, such as the five-year facility improvement program. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the town administration and all our town employees for their continued hard work. We can look forward to continue working together to make Auburn the best that it can be. And for tonight's warrant articles, Article one, the Board of Selectmen voted to defer it to the petitioner. Articles two, three, and four, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. And also Articles five through 15, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Respectfully submitted, Ken Holstrom, Chairman, Corinne M. Goodrich, Vice Chairman, Stephen Ossimonian, Denise A. Rutherford, and Daniel S. Cavern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to give you just a brief update on the state of this school. So the summer of transitions is now complete. The New Auburn Middle School opens this fall. Swanson Road Intermediate School opened for students in grades three through five, all of Auburn's three through five students. Pachachaw opened for the students in grades K to two, who would normally have gone to the Mary D. Stone. And the Julia Bancroft and Mary D. Stone schools were closed as educational facilities in return to the town. Most notably in terms of renovations, Swanson Road Intermediate School, and thank you to the town meeting members for the generous support in allowing us to repurpose CIP funds. Considerable renovations were made there. As you can see, we have a new office area here. There is a greatly enlarged kitchen area, which includes an enlarged serving line as well. In addition, work was done, a new carpeting place in our auditorium, an increased size of the vestibule area with completely security doors painted throughout. The lockers were removed, and in place of it was carpeting, as well as hooks for the hallways. Lower-level bathrooms were installed that are handicap accessible for our students, as well as a teacher's workroom area in the lower level, a nurse's office, and also a small area, additional student bathrooms as well. I'd like to recognize and thank the master team members, led by Mr. Rick Ringardt, and this group of individuals really oversaw the Swanson Road Intermediate work, but also was the team that recommended, after thorough study, to the school committee to maintain Brinmore and Pachachaw as elementary schools, and to repurpose the middle school for its intermediate purpose. And those individuals here are listed, Mark Benoff, Sean Bush, Chief Coleman, Joe Feige, Leanne Gabyry, Liz Ribbons, Joe Hamel, Casey Hanfield, Gail Holloway, Paul Kowski, Tracy Lewis, Susan Lopez, Jill Miller, Siegel Tool, Ron Cowdy, Patty Runner, Rick Ringardt, and Bob Taitrow, and I thank all of them for their time and ongoing work. Also, just for a quick update, you also approved for us to participate in the MSBA accelerated repair program. And this program actually is designed to provide money on an accelerated basis for the upkeep, or for replacement, I should say, of boilerless roofs and HVAC systems. And through that program, for the Swanson Road, the former middle school, we have put on a new roof, as well as a boiler, and at Brinmore School, a new roof as well. The best news of this, for all of those needed repairs, is because of MSBA's reimbursement of over 54.16%, that actually has saved the taxpayers in Auburn over a million dollars, and we were able to repurpose, and again, thanks to Town Meeting, monies to be able to do that without any additional revenue being used. In terms of Brinmore School, the sidewalk was replaced, that was worked with our CIP. We also expanded the playground area, and as noted, the roof was replaced as well, again at a savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars. At the Pachachaw School, the parking lot was completely repaved, as well as additional playground swings going in, and then also, once electrical is upgraded, the HVAC system will be fully functional, and that will happen this spring. At Auburn High School, that being our second, now newest, building in our district, continues to make great progress. It does not require the type of upkeep, obviously, that older buildings do, but just know that the great things are happening there. We see our Rocket Marching Band, they just actually won a bronze medal and tied for second in their division for such a young marching band, it's really an incredible accomplishment. Our We the People team has won the state championship for the past two years, and they will be competing again. We recognize our students at all levels for the accomplishments that they make, this being for National Honor Society induction. We also are very proud, and I hope that everybody in the town takes great pride in the fact that we actually now have two National Blue Ribboned Schools, both recognized for exemplary work in closing the achievement gap. Pachachaw was recognized as one of only five schools in elementary schools across the country. This is in Massachusetts, one of five, for closing the achievement gap, and just last year, Julia Bancroft did the same, them being only one of two at that time. We also have two commendation schools, Auburn High School and the former Pachachaw School, these being recognized at the state level with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And then finally, our innovation school, we continue with the STEM Academy at Auburn Middle School, as well as the Pressman Academy here at the high school. We did opt to participate in the PARC program this past year, there'll be a decision on that come November 17 from the Board of Ed, but some grade levels still were required to take the MCAS test. And I'm going to highlight for you just the grade 10 scores, which I think really emphasized the, that's the culmination of the final standardized test that students take, in pretty impressive scores, that in the 10th graders in 2015 in English, 98% of them scored at either advanced or proficient. In terms of the science, they were 84% of them who scored in those two categories, and in math, they were 92% of them. So obviously, that's recognition of the work that happens from kindergarten right straight through. And the college acceptancees that we have in Auburn, I think, is also another area of pride for us in the schools. It speaks to the fact that our students are working hard, our teachers are supporting them well, and it's being recognized well beyond the walls of Auburn. The math and science, the MENSY initiative, we continue to increase our advanced placement offerings at the high school, and this year have 335 students participating in 16 different advanced placement course offerings. We have, and thanks to your support as well, the effective integration of technology. In grades six through 12, and partially funded through the project, we have a one-to-one iPad initiative, with one-to-two being the case at our intermediate school in iPad carts in our primary schools as well. We take great pride in making sure that teachers are able to integrate it, which requires professional development, and we participate and purchase different software that proves to be effective. In terms of science and technology, the STEM initiatives, we continue to increase those. What we have, as I noted, our STEM Academy, we had a summer camp for STEM, we use the Young Engineers Club at our middle school, we have a robotics club, and that's going to be expanded, they actually went down to Kentucky to compete at the national level. We have environmental engineering, engineering is elementary, and then also a new STEM class we've offered at Auburn Middle School in grades seven and eight. But being a district that truly does believe in continuous improvement, and no matter how much progress we make, we will always seek more, until our students are all at their very best that they can be. As a superintendent, I certainly commit to doing all that we can, this is a team effort that requires everyone's input. Just to highlight for you the two articles that are sponsored by the school committee, the first one seeks your approval to transfer from general fund revenues of value of $12,327. This is actually money that the town has received, which was in reimbursement for monies expended by the school department to transport homeless students back to either the Auburn public schools, or if they're considered homeless and living in Auburn, and were attending a school outside of Auburn, we have the obligation to transport them back. These costs are divided, split 50/50 with the sending and receiving districts. Important to note is that the school district actually paid out, and this is actually an FY14 number, $35,731. So the state was only reimbursing us for 34% of what we expended. So I'm hopeful that you will support that article. The second one, at the May 2015 annual town meeting, we generously supported granting the school department $124,000 in Medicaid reimbursements. As we have looked and analyzed what we anticipate that we will get this year, the school committee is actually requesting that you amend that request down to $110,000. Once you appropriate that money, if we do receive it, we don't believe we'll meet that $124,000 mark, so we're lowering our request. And Mr. Imzy, who is Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, is going to give you an update on the Auburn Middle School project. I do want to take time to thank first of all of you, certainly the voters of Auburn, and the School Building Committee members, who have worked really tirelessly over several years' time. It is a magnificent building, on behalf of our students, I thank you sincerely for it. And if you would oblige me, I would just like to read and allow their names. Lon Boden, Jim Bonfiglio, Joe Feige, Raina Gabyry, Bob Grossman, Mark Imzy, Paul Maroney, Joe Miller, Bob Murray, Wayne Page, Mike Sampson, Jeff Slomsky, Bill Westerland, and the non-voting members, Julie Jacobson, Ed Kazanovich, Cecily Warsbuck, and myself. So on behalf of these students, I thank you for your continued support, your past support, and hope that we will continue to earn your support moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me and allowing me to update you on the middle school project. Can I let the slideshow run behind me? It's going to run for about three minutes while I'm doing a little talking here, and you can enjoy that. These are all photographs taken by a professional photographer that the architect had hired. As you know, the new middle school is open on West Street and operating with very little issues. We still have a few minor changes to do that are ongoing now, plus we have some landscaping issues with the dry summer and the dry fall. We had some grass that didn't take, so they'll be back in the springtime to take care of that and address it. But other than that, any of the issues that have come up have been minor in nature, you know, what you'd expect with new buildings, and they've been taken care of pretty quickly. Reminded of a quote by Henry Ford, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." This is certainly true of the effort that went into building the middle school. Everyone has come together and worked well to build this project. On behalf of the school committee, the School Buildings Committee, I'd like to express our sincere appreciation and thanks to the town residents, town meeting members, school committee, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, town management, the various departments, and anybody else I may have missed, for all their continued support and help throughout the whole process. It was just a short four and a half years ago that we were, the School Buildings Committee was reestablished to embark on the mission to address the middle school. was reestablished to embark on the mission to address the middle school. In May two thousand eleven, we came looking for appropriations for feasibility study. After that, we solicited for owner's project manager, our architect, and went through a very detailed evaluation of what to do with the middle school, from do nothing, renovate the existing, renovate and add, build on the site, or build offsite. Two years later, in May of two thousand thirteen, we came with the final request to build brand-new on the middle school on the West Street site. Town meeting gave its overwhelming support for the project, and a few weeks later, the town residents showed their overwhelming support by voting two to one in favor of the project. We then kicked the design team into motion with a fast-track boat to get the project into the ground and built as quickly as possible. We hired the CM to work with the OPM and the design team to further refine the design and costs and drive down the schedule, and drive the schedule. We broke ground on a sunny, cold, and blustery day in April of two thousand fourteen and held the ribbit cutting just this past August. On a beautiful day, it was very well-intended. A lot of people were here or were there. And being, personally being in the construction industry for over thirty years now, it's been an exciting bearing witness to, and being part of, a public project from its inception that has followed more of a privately funded timeframe than the public job. After all, time is money, and this is yours and mine. A little ahead of the slide. So I'd like to take a moment to thank and recognize our project professionals that worked at this on the job. Lamero Pogano and Associates, our architect and lead design, led the design team. Skanska was our owner, project manager, and Fontaine was our CM, who happened to also be the GC that built the high school that we're in right now. I wanted to personally thank all the members of the committee. Dr. Brunell already went through and named them all for me, so I don't have to go back and do that. But we certainly spent a lot of time together and spent a lot of effort putting this together. So now for the big finale. Our mantra all along has been "On schedule and honor below, under budget." And I can confirm tonight that we have definitely achieved that. In May of two thousand thirteen, we came with a budget of forty-four million five eleven two thirty-four. We approved it, and the town vote approved it. While we're not completely closed out, we've worked, developed some projections along with Skanska and Fontaine over the last couple of weeks to get us in the ballpark so that we have an idea of where we're going to. And this is, we're going to be pretty close to this, if not better than this, as we close out in the spring. So currently, we're projecting savings approaching three million dollars on the forty-four million So obviously, you know, we hit the market at a good time. This came out as a good, we had a good design going forward, and we had good teamwork from the professional side as well as from the town and the boards themselves. So again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity here, and have a good night.
To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, so as to establish a separate account to be classified as an enterprise fund for the Packerchoggs Municipal Golf Course in fiscal year two thousand sixteen or act on anything related there too. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article two, Jeff Mitchell, Precinct Three. I move the town meeting vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, so as to establish a separate account to be classified as an enterprise fund for the Packerchoggs Municipal Golf Course in fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
Is there a second? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kazanovich.
Good evening, all. Ed Kazanovich, Chief Financial Officer, Assistant Town Manager. We have two presentations tonight. I normally give mine under the operating budget, which is Article three, but because there is a relationship between Articles two, three, and four relative to the golf course, I thought it would be appropriate to give you an update on the financial status that may impact any one of those warrant articles. Following my presentation, the DPW Director and Town Engineer, William Coyle, will give a presentation on the golf course that is pertinent to Articles two, three, and four as well. I'm here tonight to give you a financial position coming into tonight's meeting. When we left the annual town meeting on May fifth of two thousand and fifteen, you, as town meeting members, voted a balanced budget. We came out with revenues equaling expenditures at the time. A number of projections and estimates were being used in order to formulate that budget. Those numbers are now known, and that's why we always make these adjustments at the fall town meeting. So on the revenue side, in terms of tax levy, we have approximately four hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents more than we estimated in May. The difference is a result of our new growth that was certified by the Department of Revenue last week on ten twenty-one at eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and change. Leading up to the annual town meeting, we use an estimate of four hundred and fifty In terms of tax levy used to fund our debt exclusions, we have an additional amount available of eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-two. We use some estimates for our September first borrowing, which was approximately twelve million dollars, long-term bonds, as well as five point one million in short-term borrowings. I can tell you that the savings as a result of that bond issue are pretty significant as a result of the bond rating upgrade we received on August sixth. We were rated by Standard and Poor's and Moody's. Our rating by Standard and Poor's is one shy of the highest grade that we can, community can receive. Moody's, we went from a double-A rate to a double-A two, which is two shy of the highest rating that a municipality can receive. The estimated savings on the twelve million dollar bond issue was about twenty-one thousand dollars per one million dollars of borrowing. That's using a conservative ten basis points, which is about one-tenth of one percent. The total estimated savings for that one issue was about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So going forward, any future borrowings, we're going to see similar savings. It's money that we're able to keep in our pockets, and we don't have to go to the taxpayers and raise that outside of the levy limit. The third revenue source in terms of state aid, we received an additional thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The arisen adjustment on the assessment side, which I'll get into on the next slide. Local receipts, we tweak this to reflect an increase of nine thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars sixty-six cents. If you look at the highlighted amounts in yellow, these are the adjustments made since the annual town meeting. We reduced our motor vehicle excise by a hundred thousand. Our actual receipts came in shy by estimates we used. Penalties and interest on taxes, we had a reduction of thirty-nine thousand over what we estimated in May. Packerchoggs Golf Course, we're treating this, for purposes of presentation, as an estimated receipt, although if approved as an enterprise fund, it would be a separate and distinct fund for those revenues to be reported in. In order to meet the budget, and Mr. Coyle will present that to you, we're estimating revenue sources of a hundred and twenty-one thousand for a partial year of operating the golf course from January first to June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen. Other financing sources, the indirect costs that are charged directly to the sewer enterprise fund, those costs went up for a number of reasons, primarily health insurance and other costs associated, borrowings as well. Minor adjustment in library revenue, that's down about a thousand and fifty-four over last year actual. Cemetery receipts up fourteen hundred and thirty-five dollars. Other departmental revenue, this is a reduction of roughly forty-one thousand. This is primarily due to Medicaid receipts that we did not receive, that is used as an offset to a warrant article to fund Medicaid expenses for the Auburn School Department. I think the superintendent previously highlighted to you that there's a reduction as a result of that in FY sixteen budget. Fin and forfeits are down fifteen thousand, and investment income is up fifty. On the available funds, this is relating to Article three and two perpetual care articles that are before you tonight, fifty-five hundred in Article three for ACO expenses, that's animal control officer, and four hundred eighty-eight dollars is well under Article three, and sixty-seven hundred under two articles for a snow blower for the cemetery department, as well as granite benches around the cremation vaults at the Auburn Cemetery On the expense side, we use state assessments. It was a projection of seven hundred thirty-four thousand nine fifty-two. The actual assessments as approved under the cherry sheet is six hundred and forty-six thousand ninety-nine dollars, leaving eighty-eight thousand four ninety-three available for appropriation before you tonight. Cherry sheet offsets, slight change of twenty-four hundred ninety-three, and a slight adjustment on the CIP tax levy is a result of rounding of four hundred and fifty-four, leaving on the appropriation side, ninety thousand five thirty-two available for appropriation. So when we put the revenue side together, four hundred eighty-three thousand two seventy-seven, we put the amount of ninety thousand five thirty-two from the appropriation side, giving us available for supplemental appropriation, five hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. As you can see, Article three through Article twelve identifies each funding source or an adjustment to the budget, balancing that out to a zero balance. If you should approve the articles as presented tonight, we would end tonight with a balanced budget. Any adjustment by not voting would change that bottom line. If that were the case, we may suggest a portion of that going into the stabilization account or make some other recommendation, all depending on the value of that money. So, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll now turn it over to the DPW Director, so he can give you a presentation on the Packerchoggs
Mr. Coyle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. Over two and a half years ago, myself, the town manager, and the CFO began the Packerchoggs Golf Course Operations and Alternatives Analysis. Back in March of two thousand thirteen, the discussion of the town taking over the operations of the golf course began. The Board of Selectmen voted on March twenty-five, two thousand thirteen, to make the following one of the town manager's goals for the year. Evaluation of the current Packerchoggs Golf Course operations, and analysis to determine feasibility of the town operating the facility at the expiration of our current lease, which expires at the end of this year. The town manager set the goal for the director of the DPW, myself, to evaluate options and research other municipal golf courses. The initial report provided to Board of Selectmen was provided to Board of Selectmen in February two thousand fourteen. Town management undertook specific financial analysis after February two thousand fourteen to determine budget and financial impacts. Town management presented the report to the Board of Selectmen in September of two thousand fifteen, which included a financial analysis. The special town meeting warrant article, warrant includes three articles related to the golf course. The initial objective was to determine the most cost-effective plan for the management and operation of the Packerchoggs Golf Course while maintaining a first-class facility at a reasonable fee structure. The evaluation process, the town administration visited several golf courses to evaluate different management options. Three local golf courses evaluated by the administration, were evaluated by the administration. Different business plans were followed by each of these courses. The operations, cost, fee structure, and conditions were compared to each facility. Golf courses evaluated consisted of the Green Hill Golf Course in Worcester, the Westboro Country Club, the Gardner Municipal Golf Course. Other courses that I also contacted consisted of the Bedrock Golf Club in Rowland, Bay Path Golf Course in East Brookfield, Hillcrest Golf Course in Leicester, and Sassamon Trace Golf Course in Nether. Green Hill Golf Course in Worcester is an eighteen-hole municipal golf course. The golf course is operated and managed by the city. The tees, greens, fairways are privately maintained under a three-year contract. Staffing by the city of Worcester consists of two full-time employees and fourteen part-time seasonal employees. Golf carts, currently sixty carts are owned by the city, and they're moving towards leasing with the maintenance plan, seventy golf carts in the future. The restaurant is privately owned, operated by them. It's important to note that the Green Hill Golf Course, again, is maintained by a private company. I believe the maintenance contract for that golf course is in excess of three hundred thousand per year, and as most of you have probably read recently in the Western TNG, this golf course is losing money. Westboro Country Club is a nine-hole municipal golf course, which, out of the three, the other two were eighteen, this would be the only nine-hole course. Golf course operated, maintained, and managed by a private contractor. Town appointed a committee to oversee the operations of the golf course. Town hall employee is allocated twenty hours per month as administrative assistant. Their role is to process purchase orders, build schedules, and perform other administrative duties. The golf carts are owned, maintained, and operated under a private contract, and the restaurant is privately operated. Again, Westboro is another community that is currently not realizing any profit relative to maintaining their golf course, and again, it is maintained privately. Gardner Municipal Golf Course, this is an eighteen-hole municipal golf course. The golf course is operated and maintained by the city. The staffing by the city consists of one full-time superintendent, three full-time workers, nine part-time seasonal employees. Golf pro is per diem for thirty-five weeks per year. Golf carts, they lease fifty-four carts with their maintenance agreement. And again, their restaurant is privately operated. It's important to note Gardner is the one golf course that is operated exclusively by the city and the DPW, and is the only one that we evaluated that is making a profit. Current operations of the Packerchoggs Golf Course is operated and maintained by a private contractor. The current contract is with Johnson Golf Management. Most recent, the most recent agreement was executed on April second, two thousand and five. Through the contract, the contractor operates and maintains the golf course and all accessory buildings. The town receives thirty-six thousand dollars annually. The contract will terminate on December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Revenues reported by Johnson Golf Management over the past, in two thousand twelve, two hundred and twenty thousand, in thirteen was two hundred and forty-four thousand, in two thousand fourteen, two hundred and forty thousand. Packerchoggs Golf Course- Packard Chog Golf Course Operation Alternatives, we looked at three options. We could continue the operations and maintenance by a private contractor, currently continue maintaining it as we do today. Management of facility and pro shop by the town, maintenance of tees, greens, and fairways by a private company. This would be similar to the city of Worcester, Green Hill Golf Course model. Or management, maintenance, and operations by the town employees, and this would be similar to the city of Gardner model. Recommendation: To assume our responsibilities of operations and maintenance of the Packard Chog Golf Course utilizing the town employees. Operating Budget Line Items: The salary would consist of two full-time employees, a full-time superintendent, one full-time groundskeeper, four seasonal groundskeepers, five seasonal clubhouse cashiers. Materials would consist of fertilizer, lawn seed, sand, gravel, maintenance, golf course maintenance improvements, building maintenance, fuel, utilities, and miscellaneous supplies. Additional annual expenses in the first six years, because we don't have the equipment to maintain and operate the golf course, we would have to purchase the golf course equipment at $65,000 per year, spread out over the first six years. Similarly, the golf carts, we would purchase 24 golf carts, again, spread out over six years, at $21,000 per year with a $2,000 maintenance contract. The subtotal would be approximately $88,000. In addition, there would be a one-time capital expenditure of $30,000 to improve the electrical service and the well and pump replacement. Project Budget Summary: As you can see, there are three columns. The first column represents partial year FY16 from January to June 30th. The second column represents FY16 annualized, which would be similar to FY17, '18, '19, and so on, and they're not indexed, but their revenues aren't indexed either as well. Years seven through 10, as you can see, the additional cost mentioned previously no longer exists, so the equipment is paid off, golf carts are paid off, and the one-time initial costs for the electrical and pump repairs are complete. At that point, years seven through 10, the town now realizes a profit, and we can increase the retained earnings at this point at $89,000 per year. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to thank you for your attention this evening.
Are there any questions?
Greg Boeing, Precinct 4. Given the current condition of our existing playfields at the schools and parks, I'd like to ask the town how it intends to maintain a golf course, and if those plans would be something that could also be shared to maybe improve some of the maintenance of our existing facilities. Thank you.
The, I believe the question is how we would continue maintaining the existing facilities and ballparks. These employees would be all new employees, so all the staff, the full-time superintendent, full-time groundskeeper, seasonal groundskeepers, cashiers, et cetera, would be new employees. In terms of maintaining our existing facility, also in Article III is an additional DPW employee, and also an additional seasonal box employee budgeted. So we are hoping that with the additional employees over and above the employees for the golf course, we're actually, which I think the Fox Department and DPW do a great job maintaining the parks and the facilities, but there's always room for improvement, and with these additional staff, staff members, we hope to improve upon that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brent Anderson, Precinct 5. With your permission, sir, I have a series of questions that I would appreciate answered one at a time, if that's acceptable.
How big a series?
A series no less than three, no more than seven, something along those lines. It depends on the, it depends on the first three answers, I suppose.
All right, let's try it.
I, I beg the indulgence of my fellow members here, and I don't want to take anyone's more time than necessary.
All right, continue.
I, I start with the salaries, and I think this might be a question for somebody else, but I'm looking at the full-time annualized budget salaries, approximately $132,000. I don't see a burdened number there, and when I say burdened, I mean burdened by pension, taxes, benefits, et cetera. I assume that's approximately 30%, like it would be for any other business, which would allow about $39,600, which would change the total annualized net from 857 to the positive to negative $38,773. So can somebody speak to that, please?
I'll try to address that, and the actual number would be 85,000, because it would only be for the two full-time employees. The seasonal employees would not be eligible for benefits.
All right. So this is where I'm getting with my follow-up questions. All right, so at a golf course, I'm very familiar with golf courses, I'm very familiar with the golf business, and I have to ask, so who is going to be the professional who's a greenskeeper? I see groundskeeper and superintendent, who's going to be a greenskeeper to make sure that we maintain the golf course?
That would be the superintendent.
And, and who is the superintendent? Is this somebody on file with the DPW?
We haven't hired that person yet. We have to wait for town meeting approval. If approved, this evening, we would move forward with advertising for a professional.
For the salary of what?
$50,000.
$50,000, yeah. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I'm, I, I know golf, and that's, that's not going to happen for a nine-hole golf course. I'm a member of a nine-hole golf course, and, and that's not going to happen for a burden, for a fully burdened salary, $50,000, that's not going to happen. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I can tell you that I have had discussions with several people in the industry, and they feel as though we would get many applicants, particularly because it's a nine-hole golf course, the feeling is that you will see a lot of assistant superintendents who want to move up the ladder will be, will be looking for this opportunity. I've already received a couple of applications for, for the job, and I expect to get many more.
I, I mean, I apologize for, for taking the time of my fellow committee members here, but, I mean, so you're talking about a $35,000 a year salary for a greenskeeper?
No, it's $50,000 for superintendent.
Fully burdened, there's taxes, there's health insurance, there's unemployment, there's a pension, there's, it's not 50,000. If it's 50, it's 65.
The, the job will be advertised for $50,000 per year plus benefits.
Okay, so then the number right here, then, is not 50,000, it's 65. So right out of the gate, we can change that 857 positives to $14,200 negative.
I think the value of the benefits, obviously, is going to depend on the individual, what type of healthcare they require, so I mean, we don't have an exact number on what that will be, but you are correct, it would be an increased cost, whether or not the person opts out not to have any medical insurance, whether you want a single plan or a family plan, but that's not built into this. That $50,000 salary is strictly for the employee.
Okay, so again, that's one, so then there's two, three, four, so right out of the gate, we're talking 50,000. So what I said was 132 is $39,600. We can assume that's going to happen. So you're going to assume a burden rate, after all is said and done, of another $39,600, because we're town employees now, and we have to pay a pension, and health insurance, and unemployment, and so on and so forth. So we're going to see, I mean, I'm just round numbers, I'm not a professional of this, this is not my job, but as a small businessman, and someone who's familiar with the golf business, it's a 30% burden rate, so we're talking about another $39,600 that's coming out of the bottom line out of this totally annualized net. So we're going to start next year, after, I'm not even talking about the first six months, which I didn't even start with, we're going to start a year from 18 months down the line minus $40,000. So I'm not opposed to this, sir, mind you, I think it's a good idea for us to invest in Packard Chog and do this, but I just want to know what the numbers are going to be. I mean, if the numbers are going to be minus $40,000, perhaps I can support that, but the numbers have to show minus $40,000. So tell me, if, where the full-time superintendent advertised at a salary of $50,000, a full-time groundskeeper advertised at $35,000, a seasonal groundskeeper or groundskeepers advertised at $27,000, and seasonable cashiers advertised at $20,000, and there's a, there's, there's a burden to that, there's a rate to that that we have to pay.
So if I could jump in, just using your numbers, worst case, near over 30%. If you look at the full-time superintendent at 50,000, that 30% would be 15,000, and the full-time groundskeeper would be approximately 9,000, so it's 25,000, not 40. So again, it's the full-time employees, and again, it also is going to depend on what type of insurance these people require. Do you recognize that there would be an additional cost, what exactly that number's going to be, I don't think we know at this point.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and I apologize for putting you on the spot here, but unfortunately, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has deemed that a business that has more than X amount of employees, and forgive me, I don't know it off the top of my head, has to provide sick time and so on and so forth, and, and the town of Auburn's not going to be exempt from that, so the town of Auburn's going to have to provide that to our employees at the golf course as well. All I'm saying is that I believe the total, the total salaries of approximately $132,000 burdened is going to be approximately another $39,600. And again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but the total annualized net for fiscal 2016 should show approximately negative $38,773.
I would have to look at the numbers. I do agree that there is an increase, if it was the 30%, you would be talking 25,000 for benefits. Keep in mind, the seasonal employees, many of them are part-time, are going to be working the cashier, less than 19 hours a week, they will not be eligible for benefits. Some of the seasonal employees during the summer also are not going to be eligible for benefits, so I think to have an exact number, I think we can discuss this all evening. I, I don't personally think the numbers are large as you're saying, and so I think we can agree to disagree, but I think until we know exactly what employees we have and what they're going to require for benefits, we can't calculate the exact cost, right? I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. Now, as a follow-up to that, with the equipment costs, we're talking about, in your presentation, an annual, an annual rate on, on an annual basis for five or six years. So what we're talking about is approximately $450,000 of expenses to the town. Give or take, is, is that safe to say?
We're carrying $300,000, so I'm not sure.
So $300,000, so, so you're carrying $300,000, I calculated about, about 450, and now we're talking about, you know, negative 40,000, $38,000 a year. You know, when you start adding 40,000 to five, that's 200, and another 300, that's, 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 you know, we're talking half and 800,000, that's a lot of money.
Where does the 150,000 come from?
You said approximately 300,000 over the five years. I'm talking about, I'm just rounding up to 40,000 times five is 200, that's a half a million dollars over five years.
I'm not following where your numbers are coming from. I think the budget, the only things that I, I agree with you with relative to the salary, the other numbers from the 300,000 include materials costs, maintenance costs, purchasing of the equipment, so you're not going to add 30% to those numbers for benefits.
No, no, I'm sorry, I, and I apologize, because I, I calculated them, and I probably could have provided them to you beforehand, but your salaries of $132,000, a 30% burden rate.
Sir, excuse me again, that includes the seasonal employees, that...
I, I, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, as a member of this, as a member of this body, I think I'm entitled to talk about the town spending somewhere to the tune of a half a million dollars a year. I, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kuzmic.
Precisely why we actually recommended this be treated as an enterprise fund, we recognize that there are some additional costs, those costs are unknown. Those employees may elect or may not elect those fringe benefits, i.e. health insurance. A retiree couldn't apply for the job, he may already have benefits, he may already have retirement, he may have to go into some type of deferred compensation, which is not funded by the town, is funded strictly by the individual. These costs are unknown. To say that it's going to result in a net operating deficit is not true, because as an enterprise fund, we capture all costs. We capture operating costs, we capture indirect costs, support costs provided by other departments in support of running that facility. In addition to that, it picks up all of the health insurance costs, any debt related costs. The fee is set based upon a combination of all those costs. We don't know what that is yet, but we truly do recognize that there may be some additional costs other than what has been identified in the presentation and that you identified tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmic.
That's why we propose this be set up as an enterprise fund, so we can recoup all of those costs, 100% of those costs through user fees and other revenue generated by the golf course.
All right, Mr. Anderson, I think we've got enough, I think the other people...
You know, Mr. Moderator, if I can just make one more point, thank you, Mr. Kuzmic for pointing that out, so the bottom line to the taxpayer is, this will be, this will be taken care of by other taxes from the town. Thank you very much.
Softball question for you, Mr. Coyle. In the past years, how many Auburn residents have used Packard Chog Golf Course, 2015, this year? How many Auburn residents have actually used Packard Chog Golf Course? We're being asked to spend all this money, how many citizens, taxpayers are using it now?
I have numbers on how many users there were, but we don't have them broken down on how many were from Auburn versus, we, we don't have that data, they don't ask the person if they're from town or not.
And I would just make that as a suggestion, I mean, I go to the gas station, they want to know my zip code, so somehow if you can build that in, because we really need to know how many Auburn residents, because I don't want to be paying for Worcester people to play golf.
So I mean, the, the advisory committee that will be working on this as well will also be looking at fee structure, and one of the things I think that they will be looking at is probably a different rate for residents, so I think by knowing what that rate is being charged, we would also know that they are a resident of Auburn.
Just as a suggestion, if you have the zip, I didn't see any advertising budget in there either, so if you know the zip, you can advertise.
Thank you.
Yes, up here on the front.
Danny Loggins, Precinct 4. I'd like to make an amendment to Article III as follows, to remove the language, amend the Division of Parks and Recreation.
Excuse me, did you say Article III? We're on Article II.
Don't we jump to three here?
Huh? We're on Article II.
I would like to move the question, please.
All right, somebody's asked to move the question. Is there a second? All those in favor who moves either question, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? The question is moved. On the, on the article, all those in favor of the article signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Let's have a count, keep our, give our count as something to do. I mean, I think it passed, but let's, let's find out. Article 2 is voted 66 for, 15 against. We don't have anything on the floor. She's a town meeting member. But I didn't give her her point of order either. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend, Article 2 of the May 5, 2015 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase line item 0119925740, insurance and bonds from $700,000 to $730,000. Decrease line item 013025691, Bay Path, from $1,197,757 to $1,193,752,000. Increase line item 012211511113, firefighter, from $1,995,514 to $1,961,014. Increase line item 0124125241, MV Repair, from $0 to $300. Increase line item 0129225388, ACO veterinary expenses, from $0 to $1,500. Increase line item 012921511127, ACO backup coverage, from $0 to $4,000. Increase line item 014211511103, wages, full-time, from $440,000 to $500,000. Increase line item 01651511221, seasonal parks, from $21,120 to $24,640. Increase line item 01752591733, GOB, $12,400, oh, $12,445,000, from $0 to $221,042. Decrease line item 017522591731, EST/GOB, $5,099,922, from $76,364, $76,640, 0. Decrease line item 017522591732, EST/GOB, $4,990,000, CIP South Old, from $62,375,000, 0. Amend the Division of Parks, Recreation and Cemetery to include a six-month operating budget for the Packard Jog Golf Course as follows. Add line item superintendent for $25,000. Add line item groundskeeper for $15,000. Add line item seasonal employees to $30,000. Add line item golf course maintenance for $39,000. Add line item fuel/utilities for $10,000. Add line item building maintenance for $1,000. Add line item miscellaneous supplies for $1,000. And to transfer from available funds, the sum of $4,386 from dog sales number 262901, and the sum of $1,114 from dog licenses number 261018. And further, to approve an amended fiscal year 2016 budget for the town of Auburn of $55,607,481, or act on anything relative there to Ms. Gabriel.
Ellen Gabrie, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 2 of the May 5, 2015 Annual Town Meeting as printed in the budget, printed in the warrant and read by the moderator.
Is there a second? There is a second. Thank you. Are there any questions?
So I can already see where this is going. So this is probably a moot point. But I'm going to make my case anyway because I at least want to be on record that I oppose this colossally foolish endeavor on so many levels. The information that's been presented to you is true to a degree, but not in its entirety. So I'm going to start with comments that were made last night at the Selectance Meeting, for those of you that didn't watch it. I counted seven times during the discussion that.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Simoneon, we're on Article 3. Are there line items here that you want to discuss? Because we're not going back and re-debating Article 2.
I'm debating Article 2. I'm debating Article 3. And if you.
Where in Article 3 are you debating? Would you show me the line?
If you would let me finish without interruption, I will make my case.
Do it quickly.
You don't do it to anyone else, but you always do it to me.
Oh, you poor boy.
Yeah. I thought you said this was about civility and principles.
Yes, it is.
Anyway, in regard to this, we should never. There's nothing I'm going to say that's a personal attack. I'm here to speak to the. And I appreciate that, I do. I'm here to speak to the information that's presented to you. Number one, the numbers are not true. Not entirely, okay? I have spoken, done a lot of research on my own, and spoken to a friend of mine I've been friends with for close to 20 years. He has almost 30 years of experience in the industry. He was a superintendent at two different golf courses and was hired away as an expert in the industry who works for a company that consults with golf courses on maintenance and everything that we're talking about here. I had a long conversation with him. The numbers that are being presented to you don't come close to what it costs for equipment and maintenance. There's nothing in the discussion in any of these articles. This is an exact science. Maybe you don't believe it, but it is. Golf is a game, but managing a golf course, taking care of a golf course, is an exact science. This is not meant to disparage anyone in the town. We have some wonderful workers in the town. But we do not currently have the expertise needed nor the equipment needed to properly maintain a golf course the way that it should be maintained if you want to put a product out there that people are going to come back to. The equipment alone that we're talking about, that's $65,000, not even close. You need special mowers for fairways, greens, and other areas of the golf course. That is way more than $65,000. But one of the things that really bothers me about this is we're at, you're being asked to fund something that's only going to be for a small percentage of the town. So think about that for a minute. Any of you that don't play golf, you're being asked to pay for something you're never going to use. Because this is a specialized place. It's not a park like Pappas, which is a wonderful facility where you can go and watch a ballgame, you can go walk your dog, you can go and walk for leisure, you can go sunbathe, you can do a multitude of things. Anyone in the town can use it for a bunch of purposes. This is a specialized thing. You're being asked to fund it if you don't play golf. If it was truly about providing a wonderful golf course experience for the residents of Auburn, how about this? Why not zone the land we just bought on South Old Road for golf course only? Package it with the golf course and sell it to a private enterprise. Someone who has to open a golf course and make money off it. Or they lose everything. This is another case of, we're going to try it, we're going to hope it works, and if it doesn't, we have the endless pit of taxpayer money that we can always go back to to fund the mistake. So this is horrible, a horrible idea. And I just want to comment on the golf course in Gardner because Mr. Coyle brought up that that was the only one that was actually making money. That is true. It is making money now. But talk to some residents in Gardner who funded that.
Excuse me, Mr. Simoneon, what has this got to do with Article 3? You've got to identify something.
This is speaking to, you're asking people to fund it. I'm speaking to why they shouldn't fund it.
What specifically are you talking about?
I'm talking about the line items to, you're asking these people to fund these things in the article. I'm speaking to why they shouldn't. I don't know why I have to keep explaining myself.
Because you're not clear.
Everyone else is clear, but not me. That's amazing. So anyway, the Gardner Golf Course. It lost money for years and years. I know because I played there a long time ago. It was in deplorable conditions. The town would've lost money for years. And though they are making money now, they're still not even with the money that they lost. Okay? And I'm just going to close with this. What you're being asked to do is the same thing as if I came and knocked on your door and said, hey, I'm going down to the casino. Why don't you give me $500? I'm going down there to gamble. If I win, you'll get your money back. It's not going to happen. Thanks for your time. Good luck.
Yes, up back, standing.
Mr. Simoneon had whatever he was talking about. But the point is, he says we're going to lose money. Well, we had it out before to a contractor prior to this. And how bad of a hit did we take during the length of that contract? Eddie, can you tell us?
Yeah, I'll stay there and I'll get to you afterward.
I mean, because we ended up being sued and everything else, and that wasn't brought up. But I think it should be brought up. I guess to sum it up, the town members, they did the right thing by voting. Give it to the town, let the town run it, because we'll all benefit by it.
Yes, Mr. Coyle, do you have something to say about the figure? And then Ms. Proudie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to clarify Mr. Simoneon's comments relative to the purchasing of the equipment being $65,000, that we don't have the necessary equipment. He's absolutely correct. We don't have the necessary equipment, but his figure is incorrect. It's not $65,000 to purchase the equipment. It's $65,000 per year for six years. And that was in the budget, so it's closer to $350,000 to purchase the equipment. And additionally, I do agree, currently, we do not have all of the expertise needed to run a golf course, which is why we're going to be hiring professional staff to do that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Proudie.
I'm Beth Proudie, Precinct 1. And I'm here tonight, not only speaking for myself, but speaking for another town meeting member, my husband, Ron Proudie, who's in the hospital, and therefore can't be here tonight. But we spoke about this meeting today. And before I go into that, I do want to say, there's something else that both Ron and I have always supported that doesn't affect directly every person in town, and that's the schools. But boy, we're lucky, we have such good ones. But I do want to say, Packard Jog, Ron said to me today in the hospital, Beth, be sure and go to the meeting. I know you're tired from running up here, but go to the meeting and ask the townspeople, town meeting members, to please support taking over the golf course. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Beth. Up on the end, up there.
Bruce Hopper, Precinct 1. Just have a question with respect to the revenues. What are we collecting? What are the greens fees that are generated right now?
The total revenue reported by Johnson Golf Management is about $240,000. I can add, though, in speaking with, in particular, Westboro, although we're not Westboro, and I believe as you move east of Worcester, the revenue probably would be higher than what we'd be expecting in this area. But they generally expect to receive about $400,000 in revenue currently. So we're definitely shy of where we should be at. And I think if anyone has spent any time at that golf course, you can see that it's definitely underutilized. But I will say that being reported is $240,000. I also want to add that one of the major items that we're lacking, that we want to improve upon, is the revenue generated from the golf carts. All communities that we met with have indicated a significant revenue source. The second largest is through the golf carts. And that's something that we are only generating about $30,000 currently, whereas the other golf courses are closer to $80,000 to $90,000. So that's another area that we're looking to increase the revenue source.
So the proposed budget indicates $300,000 on the green street. So where's that extra 60 coming from?
We have indication too from past management that the numbers in the past have been over $300,000. So we're estimating $300,000 of what our projection would be.
Even though currently it's only $240,000. So that's my question is, where's that? How are we generating that extra 60?
Again, through the golf carts. But additionally, we feel as though the golf course is underutilized in the past. We believe we can bring it back to the usage it had in the past to not exceed that. But again, the golf carts alone would generate approximately $50,000 a year. Additionally, over and above the $30,000.
I understand that, but the budget, the way it reads, it says greens fees are $300,000, not greens fees and carts.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, where is the additional 60 grand coming from? And how are we doing that?
It's a correction. You are right, it would be greens fees and carts. Total revenue, not just greens fees.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know this is, well, I brush off the "I" note. This is land that is owned by the town. And my concern, if we did not move forward with this golf course proposal, is this land protected to remain open space? Who wants to handle that? If that's a legitimate question.
Um, actually, I can probably answer that. Um, when I originally ran for the Board of Selectmen, now we're going back 40 years, one of the things I ran on was preserving what was then a golf course that the Ward family had been running for years, and they wanted to sell the land. And so, when I got on the board, Larry Brodo was the Executive Secretary. He worked with Joe Early, Louise Buchanan in Joe Early's office, and got us a grant to keep that as open land. At that time, by the way, we didn't have as much open, we didn't own, for example, Fairlawn Meadow. And then after we got the land, the town meeting talked about it, and what they wanted to do was have a golf course, continue to have the golf course, and somebody in Massachusetts' state government concerned with, you know, land acquisition and so forth, his name was Joe Lerner, and he said, yes, we could run it as a golf course, and the town actually ran it as a golf course for 11 to 12 years. This is before Johnson. Dick Cody and an advisory, Dick Cody ran, and there was an advisory committee. I'm guessing then that since it originally came to us as land, that's what the original grant was, it would continue to be. I'm not a lawyer, but that helps. Yes, the white shirt. I think it's white, I can't see. Oh, no, I meant the one in front. Isn't that white? No, not you. Jesus. I guess it's not a white shirt, I'm sorry.
Doug Nelson, Precinct Two. Just maybe a little clarification. Article Three, excuse me, Article Two was to create the fund, correct? And this is now Article Three to supply the fund with funds, right? Uh, just a little clarification, and let me just get this right. This is an enterprise fund, right, Eddie? Now that means, uh, when you create an enterprise fund, this fund will survive on its own, basically isolating it from the tax base, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now that also means that tax money won't be put into that, other than this initial setup time?
Only if it requires a subsidy, if there's a, a, if, if expenses are projected to be in excess of revenue or user fees, then the only way to balance that out is through a general fund subsidy.
Okay. Now on the flip side of that, if the, if this becomes wildly successful, does that money, is that also isolated from the town, or does that benefit the town at all?
That money is isolated from the town, and it is reserved in what they call retained earnings account in the enterprise fund, similar to that of the SOAR Enterprise Fund.
Okay.
Which can be used for capital improvements on the golf course.
So, it will, the money basically remains internal to that account, to the golf course?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought. I'm very much for this project. One thing I didn't hear mentioned was, I know the high school has, I believe, has a great golf program, and I can see this as being a benefit to them in the terms of cost, and hopefully, it was mentioned, you know, the fee structure's going towards helping benefit the residents, and also, I would think, clubs, and we have a great recreation program here in town, and I would love to see some recreation programs involved in the golf course as well with our great recreation director. Um, the, one thing I didn't hear mentioned was water for the course. Uh, I think I might have heard something about pumps really quick, but maybe Mr. Coyle can talk about that. The other thing someone mentioned was the advertising budget was not clearly in here. Maybe it is in here somewhere, but that probably is an important point. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Nelson, the, relative to the water, there is currently an issue with the electrical service with running the pumps. They can't currently run the pumps drawing the water out of the irrigation pond and then run the pumps to actually run the irrigation system. So there is currently a problem that we're trying to address, which one of the line items for the $30,000 includes running a 200-amp service down to the pump house in order for us to accomplish that, and then also looking at if there are additional improvements to the pumps needed and or well. So we're trying to address that with that line item.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Moss. Mr. Moss moves the question. Is there a second? There is. All those in favor of moving the question signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? The question is moved. So now, on the article itself, all those in favor of Article Three, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Four.
I put up the question, I sat down with the other gentleman. How far is the call back? I had my input.
Other people, somebody else's hand is up. I have to try and go across the room. You hadn't been recognized to stand up. You hadn't been recognized to stand. I was talking about the gentleman in the shirt in the light that looks white, but evidently isn't. So, okay? Then Mr. Moss had his hand up. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate from general fund revenues for the package of golf course improvements, $23,150 for the purchase of, uh, 24 2016 golf carts, $65,000 for golf course maintenance equipment, $15,000 to replace the electric service to the pump station, and $15,000 for well and pump replacement or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Vangel Corovo, Precinct One. I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate from general fund revenues for the Paketar Golf Course improvements, $23,150 for the purchase of 24 2016 golf carts, $65,000 for golf course maintenance equipment, $15,000 to replace the electric service to the pump station, and $15,000 for well and pump replacement.
All right. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Mark?
I'm not a lovely assistant, but I'm an assistant.
Mark Benal, Precinct Four. Some of those golf carts can be accessible if somebody's in a wheelchair?
Will some of the golf carts be accessible if somebody's in a wheelchair? Does somebody, yes, Mr. Coyle?
That's an excellent question. Certainly, that's something that we will look at, and if they do provide handicap-accessible golf carts, we'll make sure that we purchase some sufficiently.
Okay, good, thank you. And you're going to bring whole place up to code? You know, the, you go in front of the plan board, the rest of the building, later on? What questions I asked, you left on your machine?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What are the questions, Mark?
Like, is that, is the clubhouse going to bring up to the American Disability Act codes?
We can look at the building and see if there are deficiencies and address them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Right, is there somebody behind Mr. Benal?
Jeff Labonte, Precinct One. I, I'm sure you guys have done the homework on this. I just, I, I won't go backwards. Have you looked at least at maintenance options on the golf carts as opposed to outright purchasing? And similar with the equipment, I have quite a bit of experience with consulting for the golf industry, and frequently that provides a lot of savings, so.
Absolutely, and we do have a maintenance contract included over the six-year period.
Is it with maintenance?
Correct, it's with maintenance, and we'll own it after the six years. At that point, we would then be responsible for maintenance.
Okay. Seeing, yes, up there. Mr. Frost.
Ken Frost, Precinct Four. I tried to be recognized with Article Two and Article Three, but apparently it was, discussion was cut off really quickly. So, what I would like to propose is an Article Four, that we postpone this question indefinitely.
So, Mr. Frost? No, no, I'm going to say what you've, what you've done. Um, is asking that we postpone this article indefinitely. Is there a second? There is a second. Okay, let me just see what we have here, all right? All right, so your motion is to postpone indefinitely, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Greg Bowling, Precinct Four. I recommend that we reject the motion to postpone indefinitely, and we've already approved the first two articles, so let's finish business tonight. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All those, yes, Mr. Kazanovich.
I just want to let town meeting members know that if this motion does pass, that the equipment is critical and necessary towards the maintenance and operation of the golf course. Without it, we would not be able to operate it, and it would rip apart the budget and the business plan that was provided for you tonight.
Okay. Now, all those in favor of a motion to postpone this article indefinitely signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? The article does not pa, I mean, the motion does not pass, we are now back to the original article, and on the article itself, all those in favor of Article Four signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Four is voted. Article Five. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $12,327 from general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2016 to fund transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, on Article Five, I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $12,327 from general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2016 to fund transportation costs for homeless and/or unanticipated transportation for other students to their educational programs.
Yes, identify yourself, please, sir, and pass into the town floor for motion. You are? You are? Okay, fine, thank you, sir. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Five signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Five is voted. Article Six. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article Twelve of the May Five, 2015 annual town meeting and amend the Medicaid reimbursement amount from $124,000 to $110,000 or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Johnson, Precinct One. I moved at the town meeting vote to amend Article Twelve of the May Fifth, 2015 annual town meeting and amend the Medicaid reimbursement amount from $124,000 to $110,000.
Uh, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Six signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Six is voted. Article Seven. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $44,900 from general fund revenues for purposes of reevaluation of real and personal property for fiscal year 2017, certificate of values, certificate, certification of values or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Yes, sir?
I just read it, right?
Yes, identify yourself.
I moved at the town meeting vote to appropriate $44,900 from general fund revenues for purposes of revaluation of real and personal property for fiscal year 17, certification of values. Jeff Labonte, Precinct One. Sorry about that.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Seven is voted. Article Eight. I moved at the town meeting to appro, I moved that the town, I'm reading the wrong one. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $46,000 from general fund revenues for the care and maintenance of the Mary D. Stone School Building and the Julia Bancroft School Building or act on anything relative thereto.
Thomas Dufour, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $46,000 from general fund revenues for the care and maintenance of the Mary D. Stone School Building and the Julia Bancroft School Building.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
Greg Bowling, Precinct Four. I just have a quick question. So the, uh, $46,000, that's for half a year, and is this going to be, expected to be a recurring expense while we hold on to the building, or is this a one-time or some combination of the two? Thank you.
This will be a reoccurring annual expense as long as we, as long as the buildings are in the custody of the, of the town. But was taken by the school committee, I believe, on September 23rd, declaring those buildings surplus. They are now under the custody of the town. This cost is estimated, or this cost was provided by the school department to maintain those buildings over the course of a one-year period. One year.
Daniel Logge, Precinct Four. What's the town planning on doing with these buildings? Are they going to stay vacant? Are we going to use them? Keep paying taxes on them?
The town appointed a reuse advisory committee, an elementary school reuse advisory committee that provided a report to the town administration and Board of Selectmen, I believe, in June. That report had two recommendations. One was for the Mary D. Stone School to remain as town property for use as town administration or school administration uses. That to include office space, meeting space, and training room space. The recommendation by the advisory committee for the Julia Bancroft School was to dispose of the property under whatever terms of Chapter 30B would apply to that disposition, to utilize the property preferably for senior housing and preferably for housing to be operated by the Auburn Housing Authority. Prior to town administration making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, we engaged the services of an architect to look at the Mary D. Stone School, to see what the cost would be if we were to use it for town administration, potentially school administration, any type of municipal function. We needed to look at what needed to be done to bring the building up to code for various uses. We provided the architect with three different scenarios and asked her to report back on those scenarios as to what would potentially, the cost would be. The cost to bring the building up to code varied from probably $175,000 at a bare minimum, which would be to utilize less than 8,500 square feet under the Massachusetts Building Code, where you would not be required to sprinkle the building, or to extend and expand the use beyond the 8,500 square feet. That cost increased anywhere from $200,000. from $200,000, could go all the way up to $600,000, depending on what you wanted to do to the building. There are specific Massachusetts codes that control and dictate what needs to be done to a building, to use it for office space, to use it for space for the public, and to use it for meeting space. So in order to have a certain amount of people from the public to come into-- in a meeting space, certain codes kick in, which requires having the building sprinkled. It is not currently sprinkled. And beyond a certain amount of investment into the property, which I believe under the building code is 20% of the investment of the property, the-- if the property cost a million dollars, then that would trigger the need to put in an elevator as well. So we do have this report, we provided it to the Board of Selectmen. We have not made a decision yet because we're still looking at further costs on how we could do this. The intent is not to keep it empty, that doesn't benefit anybody, it certainly doesn't benefit the neighborhood. The intent on the town administration side will likely be to make a recommendation when we have all of our facts in place to the Board of Selectmen for disposition of the Julia Bancroft property, and we're looking at a number of different options now as to how to do that. What fits within Chapter 30B procurement regulations, what exemptions can we have, and what use could we have of that building? And as far as using the Mary D. Stone School, we could use that space, we think it's a great recommendation, but we also want to make sure that we can afford to do that within the cost. So we're trying to look at our overall facility improvement plan, which we put together in January. It's a five-year improvement, facility improvement plan for all the municipal buildings, and we're looking at that to find out if we have the revenues and the expenditures that we would be-- need to take on to move into that building. In the interim, the reason that these costs are listed in front of you, again, this is an annual cost, the building does need to be insured, and it needs to have general maintenance done to that building. We owe it to the neighborhood and to the building to make sure that we maintain it until such time that we do reutilize the building or dispose of it.
Sir? Stand up with a microphone.
What will happen on West Street if the school administrative offices move up to Mary D.?
Through the chair, that's not under discussion right now. The discussion on the town side is what is the cost to utilize that building for municipal purposes? The specific municipal purposes have not been discussed. On the town administration side, we have identified a number of needs. For instance, there are a number of training needs. If you look at Town Hall, there are two rooms in Town Hall that we can have public meetings. We can't exceed a certain amount of capacity in either of those rooms, so if we have a large meeting where we have to turn people away or funnel them into the planning boardroom where they can watch it on television. So it would be nice to work something out where we could have a large meeting space and entertain, like here, have larger groups. As far as office space, we certainly could use the office space. We also have a dire need for training space for classes, the police department, the fire department, as well as our IT department for training employees on various computer programs and things. We don't have a place to do that either. So those are the types of uses we're looking at. I can't speak to the school department.
Yes.
Doug Nelson, Precinct Two. That's roughly $23,000 a year per building, and I'm sure it's not even 50/50, but I'm guessing that's probably going to mostly oil, electricity, and you mentioned insurance. That seems pretty high. I was just wondering, is there equipment still in the schools, such as desks, chairs, something like that, that might be of value to be sold to recoup any of these costs as well? Cafeteria equipment, anything like that, and does that now belong to the town as well? Thank you.
What we did is the-- actually took out much of the cafeteria equipment that was still usable, and we repurposed it at Swanson Road Intermediate School. We also took the best desks and chairs that were available across the district, we used them there as well. So there is some surplus material, particularly at the Julia Bancroft School, and what we had done is we had actually engaged a firm. We've actually-- there was some surplus up at Packer Chog, we opened it up to all town departments to come and take what they'd like. We actually have a company that will come and remove it, and that was all planned as part of the process.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move the question, please.
I don't think we have to, actually. Any other questions? Fine. All those in favor of Article Eight signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Eight is voted. Article Nine. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $8,000 from general fund revenues for the replacement of the second and third floor 27-year-old sprinkler heads in the Town Hall or act on anything relative thereto.
John Gannon, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $8,000 from general fund revenues for the replacement of the second and third floor 27-year-old sprinkler heads in the Town Hall.
Is there a second? There is a second. Would you hand it in, please, John? Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nine signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Nine is voted.
Mr. Moderator, Ed Coleman, Precinct Three. I move that town meeting vote to appropriate--
Excuse me, you have to wait till I--
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been sitting facing the other way.
That's all right. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from general fund revenues to the stabilization fund or act on anything relative thereto. Now, go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I move that town meeting vote to appropriate $125,000 from general fund revenues to the stabilization fund.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Tom Dufour, Precinct Five. My question is, what are we stabilizing? What is the stabilization fund for? I guess is my basic question.
Mr. Kozinovich.
Mr. Dufour, it's a reserve account that is part of the general fund, or could be used for any purpose, including the general fund. Primarily used for large capital acquisition items. We recently transferred last year $450,000 out of stabilization towards a $1 million, $900-- close to $1 million fire truck, new fire truck. We recently transferred $350,000 out of the stabilization account, $325,000, or land acquisition relative to the middle school. There's approximately $2.1 million in the account today. This $150,000 would add to that. So it's for-- basically, it's a reserve account for items such as that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Ten is voted. Article Eleven. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $2,500 from the expendable trust/cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of a snow blower for the cemetery or act on anything relative thereto.
Ellen Ethea, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $2,500 from the expendable trust/cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of a snow blower for the cemetery.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes?
Danny Lard, Precinct Four. How big of a snow blower are we talking here for $2,500?
Does anybody have a snow blower answer? Thank you, Bill.
In general, it'll be a 28- to 32-inch snow blower. We have to use it for-- excuse me, clearing off all the graves in the wintertime. We want to be prepared.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eleven signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Eleven is voted. Article Twelve. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $4,200 from the expendable trust/cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of two granite benches to be placed in front of the cemetery columbarium and constructing a brick area of approximately four feet around the columbarium and a brick sidewalk to the cemetery office from the parking lot or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Joe Martin, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $4,200 from the expendable trust/cemetery perpetual care account for the purchase of two granite benches to be placed in front of the cemetery columbarium and constructing a brick area of approximately four feet around the columbarium and a brick sidewalk to the cemetery office from the parking lot.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, sir. Yes.
Is this the project that B. Caff might be able to do with Mr. Scobie's class and cut down the cost? Because I'm sure they'd do a wonderful job, I've seen their work.
Just a moment, please.
This is-- part of the cost is going to be for the price of the benches, and then the other part will be for the bricks and sand and so forth for the pavers, and the employees will be doing it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Twelve signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? Article Twelve is voted. Article Thirteen. Okay. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaw, Section Nine, Administration, to include a planning board section as allowed under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Number Five, as appearing in Article Thirteen of the October 27, 2015 special town meeting warrant. Barbara, you wanted to do the-- you didn't think I was going to read all of these.
I did. Mr. Moderator, Barbara Granger, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaw, Section Nine, Administration, to include a planning board section allowed under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Paragraph Five, as printed in the October 27, 2015 special town meeting warrant.
Okay, is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none. This is a two-thirds vote. So I'm going to ask first, is anybody opposed to this, and then we'll see. So is anybody opposed to Article Thirteen? Seeing nobody opposed, all those in favor, therefore it is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Article Fourteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Paul Revere Road as a public way from Barnes Street to the end of Paul Revere Road, where a total distance of approximately 800 feet is shown on a plan prepared by B&amp;R Survey, Inc., entitled "Paul Revere Road, Auburn, Mass.," dated August 12, 2015, or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Nataoli, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Paul Revere Road as a public way from Barnes Street to the end of Paul Revere Road for a total distance of approximately 800 feet as shown on the plan prepared by B&amp;R Survey, Inc., entitled "Paul Revere Road, Auburn, Mass.," dated August 12, 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I apologize, I haven't been up there. What condition is the road in? Does it have sidewalks, berms, drainage? And is it going to cost the town anything to bring it up to code to taxpayers?
Mr. Coyle is coming to answer your question.
Paul Revere Road, the work was completed this year. It does have sidewalks, trees, all the work was completed in accordance to the plan. In fact, the developer did an excellent job with the work, and the engineers offered a recommended approval. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fourteen signify by raising their hand. All those opposed? Article Fourteen is voted. Article Fifteen. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding a new Section 9.3.13 temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries that would provide as follows, and further to amend the table of contents to add Section 9.3.13 temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries as appearing in Article Fifteen of the October 27, 2015 special town meeting warrant. If I read this, smoke might rise, yes.
Rocco Moreno, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding a new section, 9 dot 3 dot 13 temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries that would provide as printed on the October 27, 2015 special town meeting warrant, and further to amend the table of contents to add Section 9 dot 3 dot 13 temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Dufour.
Is there-- is there anybody that has currently already approached the town regarding wanting to put a marijuana dispensary in town?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
The town planner has received probably three to four calls every couple of weeks from various organizations that are looking to do this. I do want to make it clear that this, along with the article that is related to the planning board member, both still have to go to the Attorney General's office. So as of December of 2014, all of the moratoriums statewide that the Attorney General's office allowed to go forward had to expire. We are asking town meeting members to support this so we can appeal to the Attorney General's office to allow us to put this moratorium in, based on the fact that the Department of Public Utility-- Department of Public Health recently amended their requirements for registered marijuana dispensaries and has made that process easier for dispensaries. So we are getting more requests for it. Given that, we feel that we can make an argument to the Attorney General that the regulations have changed, and therefore towns like Auburn need to have a chance to look at our bylaws to make sure that they're appropriately situated for when these cases do come before us. So we are asking to do this for one year. The Attorney General's office has not indicated whether they would support it or not, they just said to put in a good application, get the town meeting vote, and they would take it under consideration.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, this is again a two-thirds vote, so I will ask first. Is there anyone opposed to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor. It is voted unanimously. Thank you. And I now would entertain a motion to dissolve. And a second. And I suppose it's voted, too.